Okay, I'll just pick up where I was. I think that the philosophy behind it is just very different. And I think we're trying to, at least I think I'm trying to use this as a way to incentivize people to do SB 9. And they were saying that they want to heavily restrict homeowners from doing it. So I don't know how effective it'll be to have a joint meeting and to redline what they've already done. And as we all know, I think council is going to definitely talk about this for several hours and make changes anyway. So I think it might be good for us if everyone wants to meet and, you know, we can have our own planning commission recommendation and then just kind of recommend both to the council. There's just a lot of little things in there that, you know, like the residents brought up that issue of two streets that are on either side. You know, that's a specific scenario that we have to look at. There's sites that are 50, 55, 60 feet wide that we have to figure out. There's sites that are 100 by 100 that we have to figure out. Like, there's all these different scenarios that haven't really been looked at. And then, you know, my own personal thing with the FAR and coverage, I think that we should be smart about these things, but that's just me. I don't know how the others feel, but I just don't know if it's going to be a good use of our time.
So without getting into a whole, long story, I Mairus with their meetings that they had with Steve and Joe. So I think you're on the right track. We have really differing views of how the development in SB 9 should go. So I think you're on the right track. I was just, you know, from a personal standpoint, I was trying to see if we could all work together on something to take to council instead of having two opposing opinions go to council. And I felt like Susan mentioned last week, like, we're not doing our jobs, you know, if we can't come to agreements. But I think you're right. I think we'd be wasting our time.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one thing that stuck out was that they were noticing, the DRC was noticing that homeowners were kind of frustrated with the DRC process. And so they were bypassing to do SB 9 instead. And so to me, when that scenario comes up, it's like, okay, well, maybe the DRC needs to be fixed. But their interpretation was, let's make SB 9 more difficult. And I just, it seemed kind of odd to me that we're going to make this more challenging. And to be honest, we don't really have a choice because if we are too restrictive, the state is going to come down on us. So I don't know. I just think we should go about it our own way. But yeah.
Any of the other commissioners like to comment on this?
Yeah, if I can jump in, I think you've put your finger on something, but it might be a reason to have at least some meetings together because this is one of the fundamental debates in this city. And what better place to have it than between two commissions?
It was hostile last week. I mean, two weeks ago, maybe that's characterizing it too strong, but, you know, we couldn't even decide on how many members should be on. And it got a little bit hostile.
Well, and that may be, and, you know, but that's in the nature of the question here. For a lot of people, this is existential, one way or the other. And it's something we have to deal with. The other question is, how much can anybody in Los Altos do, given the nature of SB 9, given the fact that it's state law? It says, do certain things. We have a limited number of tools available to do something. I mean, I was thinking about this. The assumption behind SB 9 basically is that everybody lives on a square lot, right? And it's easy to do. The majority of lots in Los Altos are not normal by any stretch of the imagination. You've got the creeks, and you've got the expressway, you've got all these things and flag lots and all these non-conforming lots, the sort of like topsy just road and go back to the dawn of time, which I think was about 1953. You know, and you've got larger lots and smaller lots and strange lots and all sorts of things. And it's difficult to know how that would work and what, how we would handle that. The examples that Mairus raised are just the sort of the poster children for that. And, you know, do we get to legislate about that, to tell people, okay, here are the solutions that you can use? Is that really a design issue? And this is where the planning commission comes in. Our job is subdivisions. I mean, the subdivisions come to this commission for approval. We can't really do much about it if they're conforming, but, you know, we do at least have to say yes and pass that on to the council. So we have an interest in, and maybe this is where those issues come up. The designer review commission is concerned about houses. We're concerned about the land. And, you know, that's one of the reasons that we see things a little bit differently. Whether, you know, the ultimate purpose should be to encourage people and not encourage people to use SB 9 or to discourage them from using SB 9 in lieu of other procedures, you know, is something that perhaps should be discussed in the context of the commissions. Now, it may be that, you know, we get together and find out that we're incompatible and we decide that that's not going to lead anywhere. But it, you know, there's something to be said for at least trying. You know, that will be my view is, this is a debate that Los Altos has to have with itself. In a sense, this commission is ahead of a lot of others because we deal with these problems and we've sort of accepted the fact that things are the way that they are. And even in some ways, that's good. And it may be that there are others who just need a little time to be brought along, and this might be an opportunity to soften the blow. I often say that the problem isn't the problems, it's managing the problems. And this may be one way to help manage some of those problems. But I take Mairus's point. I think he's exactly right. Either it's going to work or it's not going to work. And I think that we'll be, we will know fairly quickly if we go down this route. We'll know fairly quickly if it isn't working. And Shelley, you are right, it can turn hostile pretty quickly, but, you know, this is the third rail of Los Altos existence. And, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a nasty, nasty road, one way or the other.
Steve, how would that work? Would we have to have another open public hearing meeting with the DRC? As full commission? That's what I'm asking, because that's where we were last time.
I think the answer is not necessarily. We had, we, there was a discussion internally about different scenarios. If the commissions end up deciding to go separately, then the council, as far as, as far as the wording and the resolution, they, the council directed staff to meet with the commissions and at least it said one, at least one study session and bring, bring the feedback back to council. It didn't, there wasn't any specific action for the, for the commissions to meet together. That was a recommendation from staff, just thought that there would be some collaboration, some discourse, like you were just talking about, there's, I think this commission deals more with land use issues. The design review commission deals more with the design review aspects of single-family development. And to try to, there might be some, you know, compromising on some issues. There may not. There might have been just some recommendations that with justifications and maybe opposing views, maybe just different, different standards that had different justifications. But to answer your question, we had talked about it. And if there is a somewhat of a reconsideration by this commission or the other one or both, then you can, you can decide that and move forward in your own way and provide feedback to the council that staff will bring back to council.
I'm not sure how healthy it is to have two city commissions in a Brazil aspect, you know? We should try and get along, and if we see that we're not going to, then maybe should be, just not do the subcommittee before we get into a negativity with another commission. Now, did the city council direct us to, or where did the subcommittee idea originate? Steve, you're laughing.
I was trying to find my mute button, too. Well, again, it was, it was staff's recommendation. We thought there was some opportunity for the collaboration between the commissions to work together on this and then take it back to council. Again, the SB 9 really, it entails a lot because it entails subdivision of land, it entails sort of quasi-single-family development with this duet style, duplex, whatever you want to call it. And then it, at the heart of it, though, is, I wouldn't say at the heart of it, but it's, it's single-family type of development. So it entails a lot. And I think the, the designer view commission, they're, I think they're, they express some, some feelings of that people, people will, we have seen some projects that have gone in that direction. And will it circumvent going to the desire view?
We lost you. Steve, we lost your audio. You're frozen. Can we all hear each other but not hear Steve? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah.
I've seen this, I've seen this now come up with every new state law that passes, whether it's SB 35, SB 50, now it's SB 9. Our town is, and I see this on Nextdoor, we're just, we have, there are two schools of thought on how you should approach these. With one feeling like we need to protect what we have right now and find ways to work around or subvert these state requirements and others that want to see how expansive they can be in our town. So I don't think, I mean, I think we could present, I don't know what, how we do it, but if you're of this school of thought, these are the things you would do to SB 9. And if you're trying to find loopholes, good luck, talk to the attorney, these are the other ones.
Right.
Get the city attorney. And then give it to city council or the ultimate decision makers, also with two different schools of thought amongst themselves. And see, you know, what direction they go in. Ultimately, they're the decision makers and hopefully with good counsel from our city attorney, they'll choose the right direction.
So do you suggest that we, the planning commission, meet with the planning commission and we do a scenario based, and then DRC does their own scenario based, and then those merge together to go to council? Is that pretty much what you said? Or do you still think we should all be together, talk about the pros and the cons, so we have a debate? I wasn't quite clear in what you were suggesting.
I, it's hard to come up with, I'm more thinking out loud. So let me, in terms of his suggestion, I mean, I think we could do, if we did this together, we'd have to be really candid and be like, these are the, these are the steps you take if you really want to encourage SB 9. And these are the ones, like, we're not hiding the ball here. No, no one is presuming we are working within the system to, you know, promote SB 9 when we're doing the opposite. And just like, be clear about that. Because I think this notion that it's like all or nothing, that either this side's going to entirely win or that side is going to get everything they want, might help us get somewhere closer to the middle. Like, well, that's, that's not going to be reasonable. No attorney's going to sign off on that. And yeah, this might encourage, you know, this might just be too much for our city. What is some happy medium? I don't know. I don't know if it's possible to reach happy mediums anymore. But if we all, if we recognize that we're, we have to, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I do think that, you know, ideally, you know, you'd love to compromise and work together, but I just don't think that the R110 standards should be copied and pasted the way they are. I think that a big mistake, which not only Los Altos is doing, but a lot of cities are doing, is they're, they're just kind of copying and pasting. And SB 9 is essentially going to be a new zone. It's going to be a new, almost like an R15 zone now. And so we have to create kind of new standards because if you really just look at what they have now and you apply it to certain sites, it's just not going to be possible. A lot of these things are going to be just impossible to satisfy everything. And we're going to have a bunch of issues with residents saying, I can't physically do two homes and two ADUs and meet all the standards. And, and also, we don't really want to see odd-looking homes when we drive down the street. I mean, something as simple as plate height, they, they want the plate height to be three inches shorter than a normal R110. It's, I don't know why SB 9 gets six less inches of plate height. It just, little things like that, I think, are kind of odd. So as far as design, I don't, I think we can use some of what they have and we can apply it. I don't want to just, you know, trash them and say that everything they have is wrong, but I think there's fundamental things that we should really look at and really have a discussion and not just copy and paste. Like, a perfect example is when the residents sent all those emails about two streets on either side. That's a legitimate issue that we have to discuss and say, will the rear parcel have access to the back or should it all be from the front? You know, those things we really need to discuss. We can't just, you know, have a blanket.
Yeah.
I agree with Mairus. I've looked on SB 9 as a kind of a hybrid, and I think his point that it's a, it's a different animal. I mean, we don't want to be sitting here approving a bunch of large multifamily complexes and a bunch of tiny little houses. This is an opportunity to spread things out in a way that makes sense in terms of the, if you like, the overall contour of the city while still accommodating the requirements that are coming on us and over which we have very little control. And, you know, and I'm not particularly sanguine about the efforts to change the constitution, and that may happen, and if it does, fine. But, you know, I'm looking at figuring out what we can do with what we've got, not worrying so much about what might happen. Because what might happen, it would be a good thing, perhaps, and at least it would make it easier. So we've got to figure out, as Ronita is right, I mean, this is, this is, you know, you put sugar in your tea, don't you? And, and, and there's no, you know, there's no arguing about taste. And that's really what this, this, in a certain sense, is like here. So it's an opportunity, the commissions are places where the debate, if you will, gets saucered and blowed, right? And so by the time it comes to the council, theoretically, every side has been heard, people have had a chance to express and to vent and to do that. And it's now possible to say, okay, this is what came out of it, and this is the useful part, and this other part isn't quite so useful. And that might be one of the arguments in favor of doing this subcommittee approach. It might be the first step towards that. I don't see this as something that gets done, you know, in two meetings and then we do a report under the council.
It's a little hard, though. I mean, and it's a little hard to do it in a small subcommittee because you're getting very biased views by whoever is, whoever are those two people.
Yeah.
So, you know, for you to do it like Ronita suggested and be transparent, we do it in an open, public meeting where we're really debating the hard issues and then talking about, yes, this could work, no, this couldn't, why, and making a shopping list for the council. I mean, Steve, there, Steve, is that the correct format, you know, process that we come back and debate this openly? We all come prepared with what our best, you know, compromises or what we see as impediments or what we see as positives, each commission, and then we, you know, put them on the paper and, and then send them to council. Is that, is that the right process, public, public meeting?
I mean, I don't think there's any right or wrong here because the, the council is just asking for feedback at this point. So the, again, it was staff's, and sorry, I dropped. There was staff's recommendation to meet in the subcommittee. I think we're still recommending that pathway, even if you choose to, to discuss this just amongst your own commission, bring it back to the full commission. But you're really relying on the subcommittee members to, to provide that feedback because it's a small working group. It can be a little bit more dynamic with scheduling meetings. We can make them, you know, they can be public meetings and whatnot with, with the virtual meetings. So it can, there's transparency that we can have, and then it can bring, you can bring it back to the full commission with a final recommendation to, to the, to the city council. You can also just take it up as another commission, full commission item to discuss. But it's either going to be an additional item on your agenda or a study session before, you know, the regular meeting. And it's just sometimes, as you know, harder to get the full quorum together for, you know, study sessions.
This is, this is big. This is the biggest thing that's going to happen to our town for many, many years to come. So.
I personally think that just having it on a planning commission agenda and having, you know, their standards that they created, but then having us discuss it and then giving our red line and seeing if we agree. And if we do, then we move on to the next section. And if we don't, then we come up with, you know, what our recommendation would be, and then that's just a kind of a red line underneath each section. And if we're happy with that, then council can see theirs and then can see what we would have done. And then, you know, just kind of go from there.
I think that's a great idea, Mairus.
Mairus, your thought that this is really going to require a whole new standard, it's like its own new zone? I mean, is there, are you aware, and this is probably a question for staff, too, but have, are any towns ahead of us on this? Like, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and actually create it for the?
Steve.
Yeah, I'm dragging those stuff. So I think unlike, unlike other sort of standards that are developed and, you know, cities, you know, don't reinvent the wheel. But, so we often borrow from other cities. But SB 9 is interesting in that I, I'm pretty sure what we heard from the city attorney was, you can adopt objective design standards if they further existing characteristics of the city or subjective findings that we have in existence. So we need to create standards that are for Los Altos and they support or they're based on, you know, current design review findings or not, you're not creating, necessarily creating, you know, new design standards that are for some new zoning district. They're, they're really objective design standards to further the existing goals.
But it has to be with, with the, what SB 9 exists to do in mind. And I think that's where, that was Mairus's point, and I think that's, that's where the design review commission and this commission don't see them the same way because we're, we're perhaps more accustomed to thinking about that than they are. And it just, this is all new to them in some.
Yeah. I mean, the bottom line is a subdivision that we typically see, which is a 20,000-plus lot, you know, is just inherently going to be different than under 10,000 or right around 10,000. And we have to kind of prepare for that scenario of a 10,000 square foot lot being split into two and then what those new homes are going to be. And that was one reason I said the FAR thing, because I don't think that logic still, you know, we can't just apply the same logic as we keep going down to smaller parcels. So a lot of it's just about, a lot of it's not even regarding design. A lot of it's just about how do we fit two units plus two ADUs potentially? And we make it all make sense and have the driveway, the curb cut, you know, everything, the access point. There's a lot of these tricky things that we have to consider.
Yeah, parking. Yeah.
Parking.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, so, so why don't we plan on having our own session that's dedicated to this and, you know, do a red line markup, try and come to some agreement? And then sharing that, you know, with the DRC document to council? Steve, my opinion is, and I don't know if the other commissioners agree, to have a subcommittee prior to that is kind of a waste of time. I just don't know if we would really get everybody's intent out in each one of those paragraphs. So why don't we just meet as a commission and everybody come prepared to talk about, you know, their likes and dislikes of each one of those sections? Well, that's wrong. We're, you know, looking at objectively each one of the sections and talking about the pros and cons of the sections and then moving forward.
Yeah.
Does everybody, was that encapsulated?
Yeah, that makes sense. The only other alternative, and I'm not recommending this, would be basically a retreat where the two commissions would get together and spend like a Saturday slugging it out.
I don't think they want to, Eric. I don't mean to.
No, I'm not recommending it. I'm saying that's, that would be the only alternative that I could see. You know, and I think we would end up slugging it out, literally. So, you know, that may be down the line, but, but I think that we, if we can crystallize our thinking on this, then, you know, that would be helpful for us, certainly, as we go forward. And then later, perhaps, you know, if the designer review commission did the same thing, we might find, first of all, that there are areas of agreement. And secondly, we would, we would have an easier time if we had to get together and, and hash it out. We would have something more concrete to work with on both sides. So.
And point of order, Steve, when we do this, this goes out to the public. So do we receive public comment while we're doing this?
We would, our intent is to make, to make these as transparent as possible. So if the members of the public want to provide feedback themselves to consider in your discussion, then I think that would be the best, the best route. And if you're working, I mean, definitely if it's not a subcommittee, then it would be either as a study session or a discussion item on a regular meeting. So then it would be a, there would be an open, you know, open to the public heard, the Brown Act. As a subcommittee, there's a little bit more flexibility with that, but your recommendation would eventually be considered by the commission, the full commission and go back to council as a public.
How's the docket look for this next few months? Are you receiving a lot of applications or do we have some meetings where we actually don't have any agenda items?
Well, as you know, the, you know, the housing element will be, the draft document, I believe, is still slated for, end of this month, beginning next month. There, so that's going to be a hefty document to review and provide input and feedback on. We do have a number of multifamily projects moving forward. So it's always hard to tell at what point they're going to be really, which agenda, which agenda they're going to be sort of pressing for, but it, it, it just kind of comes and goes. So.
I don't think a study session really, an hour study session really gives us enough time to talk about the issue. So maybe, I don't know, how's the rest of the commission feel about making it a regular agenda item?
I think that's the smart thing. Especially if we, if we have a time when we could just, as we're doing tonight, that could be the focus of what we do. You know?
Sounds like a plan. Do we, is there a motion or something we have to make on this, Steve? Or do we just now say that we're going to agendize the discussion for SB 9?
I, yeah, I would recommend that you, I'm trying to think of the words, if you're reconsidering your desire to meet as a, in a subcommittee and, and your, your reconsideration is to meet as a full commission to discuss your feedback to the council regarding SB 9 objective standards. But I guess my only other input that I would have and, or kind of reflection on, the council did spend their efforts in adopting. the council did spend, um, their efforts in adopting objective standards. And there was, um, commissioners, although not on this commission, but other commissioners that are involved in the process, staff that was involved in the process. So, um, the, I, I'm just trying to think that if, if your intent is to go through and then redline everything and say how they should be, that you can do that, but you might want to spend, focus your time on efforts of more of the land use considerations and, um, some of the aspects that are more, um, aligned with the goals of this commission with regards to land use. But, um, that's, that's your choice.
I guess, uh, I guess redline was, was maybe too strong of a word. Uh, probably just adding kind of our suggestions, um, to it. And just kind of discussing and, and having our recommendation, but, but still keeping their framework, I think would be best because, you know, I think that they do have some, uh, you know, I think substantial things to, to offer, but some stuff I think requires our discussion and our take on it.
Sure. And then maybe there's opportunity to, to make suggestions if there is, from what I'm hearing you express previously, if there's a desire for the city to incentivize the SB nine, um, duplex type of development, do a style development, that how, how you would do that and, and of that meaningful way, but also preserve, I think, the, what people respect in Los Altos and, which is the single family larger lots and, um, privacy and all those things that come along with that.
Yeah.
It'd be more land use policy and less land use, if you will, application in a certain sense. I mean, it's, it's in the broad sense, it is land use. It's how we use the few miles we've got.
Yeah.
And, and what direction? I mean, some of it we may have no choice in, um, and some of it we may have, have the ability to shape something. And, and, and that is something that we do. I mean, we should be planning, um, you know, it, it isn't just about saying yes to projects. It's also about, you know, we can advise the council about what we believe the policy choices are and, and perhaps what we think, what policy choices we might recommend to them, but certainly, uh, what those are, and that may help to shape their discussion as well.
Aren't there parts of SB nine that really don't apply to us? And there's parts of SB nine don't apply to DR? Um, in which case they're doing what they're doing. And when they're reviewing the SB nine, we're going to address our part and then we're going to send it on to city council.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I don't know why we, we need to, if you will, and, um, redline or make comments unless what they did or what they were doing overlapped into our area of expertise.
I think that's fair.
Okay, we have a path forward. So we will agendize this for, should we, uh, Steve, maybe we should look at what our agenda is for the next meeting and, and, uh, talk about that, you know, in this week. And if, if it's light, we could put it in for the next meeting. And if it's not light, we could maybe move it to the following meeting that works. So we can get through the draft housing element without a lot of distraction.
Uh, yeah, I think you still may want to put a, some, a motion and a vote on what you'd like to do with.
Somebody like to craft.
Can we just make a, a motion that we opted not to proceed with the subcommittee? Period?
I, I think we, it might be a motion to reconsider our vote and then, um, you know, basically a motion for reconsideration of the motion that was passed the last time. And then, um, both the way we were apparently voting. And then it would be agenda and then, then direction to staff would be to agendize this. And Shelley and Steve will get together and figure out when they can do that. Agendize it appropriately, um, at a time when we would be able to devote some attention to it. And, and with the, the, you know, the other members here as well. So.
Right, right.
So if, 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 if that works and I, I don't hear Steve screaming in, in protest, I would make a motion that we reconsider our decision to form a subcommittee and, and have that subcommittee meet with the fellow subcommittee from the, um, design review commission. And, and in a sense, and withdraw that, that decision in, in reconsideration. So.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, great.
We can do an all in favor here.
Yeah.
Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Now let's just do a quick roll call.
Okay.
Cause we.
Yeah, I get it.
Aren't supposed to be doing that.
Okay.
Um, so Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahie.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Yes.
Commissioner Bodnar.
Yes.
And Chair Doran.
Yes.
That is approved. I'm sorry, and the, the motion was from, um,
I made the motion.
Steinle and the second was Roche.
Yeah. Motion for reconsideration.
Okay. Um, so yeah, staff will bring the item back to the full commission. I think as a, just as a comment, as a, as kind of a working, um, a, a working product, I, I think as far as like staff reports and stuff, we're going to be maybe a little bit more informal with, um, how we delegate some staff time. But, um, we'll work through that process. And, and sorry, Chair Doran, I think, um, in the first item with the minutes, there was a motion and a second, but there wasn't actually a vote on that, um, a formal vote. So I would recommend to go back and actually take a vote on that.
Okay. From.
The motion was, um, from Commissioner Roche to approve the minutes. There was a second by Bodnar and my recommendation would be to do a full vote.
Let's, um, let's take a vote on the motion that was made to approve the minutes by Commissioners Bodnar and Roche. So could you do a roll call please for minutes?
Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahie.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Roche.
Commissioner Bodnar.
Yes.
And Chair Doran.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now that we've moved this forward, let's see where we are. Any reports or, uh, commission reports to give in council meetings? I don't see any.
Can I ask the commissioner, um, chair a question? I know in the previous year, and I'm new again to this commission, we were assigned nights that we were.
Oh, yeah.
Supposed to be with city council, listening what's going on. And I noticed in the last year that hasn't happened. Is that something we, I frequently turn to the city council, is that something we should do on our own? Or is that something that needs to be assigned so we know what's going on there?
Well, I remember, yeah, John Biggs did those assignments. Steve, what's your opinion?
Sorry, are you talking about the, um, like commission priorities and goals?
No, no, he's talking, go ahead, Richard, you can speak for yourself.
No, it's just the city council. We were, we were, a commissioner would be assigned that particular city council meeting to listen and see if we, what went on that applied to us in my nutshell, my description.
Just like Councilman Weinberg is, you know, our liaison, we each had a meeting that we would listen to and then report back if there were any items to report back onto the commission. And you didn't, you know, if you didn't attend it, you at least had to listen to the recording.
Um, yeah, I, I can look into how we did the previous rotation. I am aware of that, that scenario or that, um, those responsibilities for the commissioners. But I don't know specifically how we did that rotation. Maybe, I don't know if since Commissioner Potter's been on for a while, do you recall how that rotation worked? I can look and see if we have, um, some documentation of that.
Is it even something we need?
The rotation?
Yes. We're being, being in attendance.
Sorry, I think Commissioner Bodnar, I don't know if you were talking between.
Sorry.
So, um, hey, this is Jack, Associate Partner, uh, because I'm also another commission's liaison. So, um, based on my understanding that if there is a project that, that would be recommended by the planning commission to city council, then, uh, the council may want a, a representative from this planning commission. If the council would have any questions, uh, would like to know the detail, why you recommend this item approval or other, um, decision to the council.
We're just talking about present, you're just talking about how we did, how we. It was literally like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then repeat one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then if you had to switch, that commissioner made, made the arrangements to find someone to swap in their position. So, uh, at the beginning of the year, we got a calendar for every meeting and it really was just everyone in order. So the number ended up being around the same. And you could see ahead, oh, I know that date isn't going to work for me and you just made plans.
But it wasn't tied to a planning commission. We, at least I didn't see it in the year I was on, it wasn't tied to a planning commission approval. That was before city council. It was just you were assigned a meeting to listen to and report back on.
Correct. And you know, if, um, you saw that the agenda had nothing, that was something that we would like be asked a question on, then in a post-COVID world, it was recorded, um, actually there are recorded, but you could, people, folks would watch it after the fact. But if you saw something on the agenda, it was a matter that had been before us, we would go. It would the idea that if they had a question they would ask. And I would say eight years ago, there wasn't a time that we didn't get called on and ask questions about it. Fast four years, I don't think they've ever asked a question of planning commissioner. So it, yeah. It probably makes sense for us to be there and it, but it also probably makes sense for us to be asked questions.
Okay. Well, something to discuss further. All right. Anything else to add for a future agenda item? Yes, ma'am. Well, speaking no other business, I think we can adjourn for the evening, 7:58. Thank you, everybody, for your input. I think we now have a path forward on SB nine.
Thanks. I'm sorry for my technical difficulties tonight.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you know.
Doesn't usually happen to me.
Powers that be at city hall and get you some.
Get better equipment.
Steve, this is Richard. Will you follow up on trying to find out if the May 24th or 26th is going to require, uh, what, what time and what day is the planning commission?
And yeah, for the, um, for the benefit of other commissioners alone, there was a, there was originally a meeting that was requested for May 24th for discussion of the housing element. But I believe that was moved up like that entire month. And you discussed that with the, the city council, um, of the 20th, April 26th, I think was the date. So I don't think that meeting is being scheduled anymore, but I'm going to be checking with, uh, community development director and I can get back to you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Great, thanks. Thanks, everybody. See you all soon. Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.